Is that ready?
No.
No.
It's recorded.
We're recording it posted tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, folks, I'd like to start the meeting with the Aboriginal acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge that the land of which we gather, this indigenous territory of the Semics, and is home to many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honor the connection to the land, rivers, and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. With that, I'd like to motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Alina, thank you very much. Jared won't be with us at all.
No, not at all.
Adopt the minutes of the meeting up to the 9th. Sue, second. Colin, favor. Thank you. President Serrazza from the previous meeting, Chief Coss was on advisory committee. Just four here. How is that advisory committee coming together, Chief?
Well, it's actually making some progress, and we've had some reach out to various groups in the community, I guess, just trying to sort out, again, back to the what's the ultimate goal and who should be involved in it. But I think we are making some headway in identifying some of the people that at least we can have those initial meetings with to set out the vision, the mandate, some of the objectives of the committee. Meeting with Jerry Rimple and one of the representatives from Coins tomorrow will be sort of the first meeting. But I'm also kind of, we've got a reasonable amount of interest, but kind of waiting, I guess, until we discuss some of the stuff in the next in-camera meeting in regards to the advisor, the consultant, Dr. Mugasa, that maybe some of the steps that he thinks we should be looking at. And I think he's got some very good ideas and some of the information that he sent already. So just kind of lining up some potential people to go to, but don't want to go too far down the path until we maybe have some better direction on exactly what we're looking for at this point.
Any questions or comments? Would we, would we at some point put it up to the community that we're able to fill the committee or?
I don't think we're quite ready for that yet, John, because we don't have a clear purpose and objective defined yet, so.
I think that's the ideal, is in the end, but I guess having that clarity on, you know, what we're looking for and what the commitment is going to be, some of those things answered before moving forward to sort of selecting people. Because I also think there could be a fair bit of interest. There's already been a fair bit of interest just based on a few very generic media releases that I put out, a couple of on-air interviews. So I think there's going to be interest, but I think in fairness, once we get to the selection part of it, we want to be able to share with the people what exactly they're committing to, what we're looking for. Plus, I think we need to have a good idea of what it is that we want to, so we know where we're picking.
Yeah.
In terms of reference, you have to be.
And the note that Jane sent where she indicated that one of the people she's in touch with in the community was a little bit shocked by hearing via rumor about this because they thought that it was a request for commitment and they didn't really know what it was about yet. So I think until we have something concrete to tell people, we're just going to create
This is different from the diversity committee, right? We're talking, this is not that.
Well, we're kind of temporarily calling it a diversity committee just because that's what other departments have called their multicultural ethnic advisory. I mean, that's sort of one of the things we, I guess, also need to consult with people as to what would be the appropriate name for it. It's kind of difficult at this point when we don't even know what it's going to call to present or put anything out on it. So I think I did put in that one release just that, you know, the appropriate name will be discussed as well and identified at some point down the road, so.
But we're only talking about the one committee here?
Yeah.
The one committee, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, it may not be, it may be a diversity committee, but because it's not just ethnic diversity.
It might be an equity committee or, you know, who knows?
Exactly, because in Nelson, it's not just about the visible minorities. There are minorities and, you know, people from diverse backgrounds, not necessarily based on race.
Yeah, and even some of the, even some of the potential candidates may or may not fit into the, you know, I guess, for lack of a better term, the target audience, I guess, until we decide what that, what that is, what the makeup is that we're trying to focus on and address to get the feedback from.
And we have that on the next agenda also to discuss, right? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Just related to that, what about the thought exchange thing that we were going to have Ginger do to?
Thought exchange?
I think that's also in the next agenda as well.
We talked about it data, because we talked about the survey.
Yeah, so that's going to be part of this whole process.
It may not be.
That'll be a board decision.
Yeah.
I think if we did go ahead on it, that would be based on input from the committee wants it set up as well, so.
So come after the committee is done, our exchange, you see?
We had talked about surveys, like, I don't know if you remember, so we're not clear now whether we are even going to proceed with the surveys. And if we are, it will be after the established committee, because we want input from them into the survey. So it's the back end of the year, right?
That's what we decided at the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
A little confused to say, but I thought the thought exchange was supposed to be so done so that we could hear from all aspects of the community and those that are affected.
The thought exchange was just thrown out as a possibility, and so then we have done some work. So Jane and I met with Ginger, like to talk about it. That's not the approach we have made.
Okay. Okay, Chief.
Oh, yeah. You're on.
That was a nice report. Generally, again, overall, this would constitute this quarter's update. The budget looks good. I've had several meetings with Colin McClure, the CFO for the city as well, with a few different reasons and initiatives we're looking at doing and where the funding would come from and stuff like that. So we've had some good discussions on the budget. There's still some updating and implementing of the current numbers that should be happening soon if it hasn't happened already, just with the recent approval of the actual budget for 2021. But again, overall, all of the subcategories are good. We're basically right on target for this point of the year, if not in the block a bit on spending, so I don't anticipate any issues arising. The one, the one that's a little bit out, but it's the same reason as previous updates is that just until Chief Burkhart is officially retired, it's, there's still some overlap in salary dollars being spent there.
Wasn't, isn't that over now? Wasn't it the end of June?
Yeah, around the end of June, so now we should see sort of.
We'll see it in future months, we'll see it.
Next quarter, we should see. So this traffic fine sharing, when does that money come in and start coming in?
And that's one of the things I spoke to the CFO about, and unfortunately, we don't control that, and it seems to be quite varied from speaking to him as to when we get that. This time last year, we had it already, but this year, and he's not exactly sure what the reasons would be that it's been delayed a little bit longer, but we should be seeing it any day really out of the years, more than half over, so.
And we're confident that that budgeted amount is going to be the amount?
He hasn't had any indication that it would be anything significantly different. You know, there's, there could be some fluctuation in it, but it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't be significant. I guess if it is, that hopefully will come with some explanation as to why, but I don't see any reason to worry about it at this point from conversations with him.
Was COVID, was there not a reduction in volume of traffic on the roads and so forth?
Well, there was probably some reduction in volume for a short period of time, but I think that would have been more last year, just judging from my previous experience. And there was also a reduction in traffic enforcement on the RCMP side of things, so I would somewhat guess that that was probably similar in the province here. But as, as things progressed, it seemed like the enforcement picked up again and the traffic volumes picked up again back to somewhat, you know, level of normality last, you know, through last summer and the fall there. So, so again, I would think it would be pretty, pretty close to that number again, if not potentially even a little bit higher, fingers crossed, but.
Any other question? Just one, are you hearing anything about your prisoner program going forward?
Yes, and that was the other thing I was going to comment on. Again, that's educated speculation is probably the best way to put it. I've done some looking into that, and then the CFO, when I spoke about that as well. We're starting to see a little bit of an increase already in some of the prisoners. It's not significant at this point, but through a few different contacts, and again, nobody has an exact prediction or really educated prognosis of what that might be. But based on courts opening up again and judges generally the preferences to have prisoners in courts in person and things like that, and then speaking with the sheriffs based on what they're seeing, because they transport all the prisoners, they felt like we should get back to somewhere between 50 to 60% of what it was for this, you know, for over the next roughly year, and then probably increase back to somewhat normal levels again if, if there isn't like another wave or a significant variant or something that comes out. So, so it, we should be back to 50, 60% in the next six months to a year, and then hopefully, if everything stays moving forward, it should go back to somewhere close to what it was before. Again, it's a little bit open to how the courts look at it because they're the biggest influencer on that, you know, so if they've gotten used to first appearances being done by video conferencing and things like that, we may see more of that, so that'll obviously affect the prisoners, the prisoner transports around the province, but.
So still a bit of uncertainty there?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's going to be a gradual increase with the potential for some, you know, step backs if, if they run into more problems with COVID or other, other things.
And weren't you also talking about your concern about not having somebody dedicated to monitoring that so that the costs would go up at the same time as the?
Yeah, there would certainly be some costs now, again, with, with, you know, kind of getting some information from Shiloh and speaking to the CFO, just kind of relating in that second desk position that was budgeted in. You know, that's just because of the significant decrease in prisoners, that's kind of gone to the back burner a little bit, but that's certainly something we'd be looking at again.
If it increases.
So there would be some more cost, but I think costs that we might be incurring anyways looking at for, for some additional admin support and various things in the office for things that need to be looked after, so it could be kind of grouped together. So we might incur the costs a little bit one way or another, and then that way they can also have that function of assisting with guarding and matroning and making sure that prisoners are monitored appropriately to kind of keep some control on that level of risk.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I'll move acceptance, yeah.
Second, and I'll bear, thank you very much. Okay, 5B, BCA, MTP, BCA, TP.
Yeah, there is not a significant amount of updates. The last meeting, that was right after our last month's June's board meeting, was really focused on reviewing what committees were in place for, for the various BCA, CP, AMCP groups and trying to, I guess, do a bit of a reset with a lot of movement and retirements and different things going on with policing, and some of the committees had really slowed down because of COVID and some of the other things that, you know, we're starting to see a pickup in that again. So it was almost the administrative side of identifying who was still working on the various committees and some of the new committees that were identified. I'm officially, as of yesterday, officially part of the cybercrime committee, and before that, I was on the mental health and vulnerable population committee, so I'm still on those two committees. The one, I guess notable update there is, at this point, again, barring any backwards movement with COVID-related things, they're, they're seriously looking at an in-person meeting for this fall, so that'll be nice to actually have it in person and meet some of the other chiefs, and then they're actually setting aside some time and that for some of the committees to get together in person and maybe get some appropriate discussions and work going again on some of those committees. That's it for those two groups.
Community policing.
Yeah, community policing. This week, just this weekend, some last week, the beat officers, both of them that we've been using have been on, they're on vacation, so a little bit less of a presence downtown. We're still trying to get some, some visibility down there. Brian Staff Sergeant Weber went down today and spent a couple hours down there, so over the next week or two as well, I'm, my schedule's a little bit lighter, so I'm hoping to get down and maybe walk up and down the streets a little bit myself. I've been getting out a little bit in the last week or two, and it's nice to get out there and see just how busy the community's gotten over the last couple of weeks. I almost can't believe that it's, it takes, it takes a while. Yeah, it takes a while to get down the street compared to like even just a couple of weeks ago. So that part's good. That's pretty much it for the community policing piece. And I'll jump right into the fentanyl piece as well, like, you know, it's kind of a, kind of a good news thing, and I'm hoping it stays that way, but fentanyl issues certainly have seemed to really leveled off. We really haven't had any significant incidents in the past couple of weeks, even at the provincial level, there seems to be less, even though we're still going to continue with the crisis task force meetings and that. It seems to be the, the province isn't quite as concerned about what's been happening, so I think everything's moving in a positive direction there. Some of the required reporting that we've been doing just don't, it doesn't seem to be that they're requiring anymore. Shiloh was reporting on a number of things monthly, and we just haven't been asked to do that anymore in the last while, so.
What do you attribute that to?
That's a, it's a good.
Less supply, people behaving more safely.
COVID, you know?
Well, that too.
COVID actually had a negative effect on it for a while just because of the isolation, certainly on the overdoses of the deaths, just because people were using it alone in private places, and then just, you know, some of the mental health issues that came along with COVID certainly seemed to push it up, so, you know, I'm not sure if it's a combination of a number of things, some of the initiatives that were put in place to really promote people not, you know, not using on their own and stuff, and now with slowly the restrictions coming off, I think that's probably had some positive effect on it. I don't know if that could be attributed to the whole of the effect, but.
So some harm reduction stuff, like, will people not given the antidotes to carry around?
They, well, there was, they were being distributed, but, you know, if you're by yourself and you get into trouble, it's, there's nobody there to administer it, so that was one of the problems, like, people were just, you know, getting themselves into trouble, and it's kind of like going swimming and leaving the life jacket in the boat, like, you just don't have it, you know, you don't have it, and when you get into trouble, it's not really much use to you unless there's somebody else to get it to you, so.
Hopefully, we don't get to a point where there's an acceptable level.
No.
Agree to, as far as deaths go.
The scary thing is there's always, you know, it's much like the variants of COVID, there's always, people are always changing the dosages or additives to it and experimenting with different things to make more money or things that are more addictive, and unfortunately, that's, some people seem to be, you know, that's their, their mission is to up the potency or the addiction levels and stuff, and then that usually comes with another round of, you know, unfortunately, overdoses and deaths. So again, we hope it doesn't, but we also have to be prepared for those things to come up.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Director's reports, restorative justice.
I haven't had a meeting, so I've nothing to report.
That's fine.
I don't know if you have anything. Oh, I thought you directed, so, yeah, no, we haven't had a meeting. We used, we were going to have one, and then there was this incident at L.B., at high school, that, you know, they got them floating on, hands on, so there was no time for it.
That's been the majority of the work with, and I've met with the coordinator there a few times on things, and, you know, overall, I think I'm very impressed with how that all went and the, the level of commitment that a number of the volunteers had that came in and made sure that that got done in fast order. You know, normally, that's not something that would happen with that many people going into the restorative justice process all at once, and a bit of a challenge finding even some of the volunteer work for some of the people to do, so that's something I think we might be looking at going forward is whether or not you can sort of have some pre-arrangements with a couple of different agencies or the city or whoever.
I was thinking of the city, you know, like, when I walk around, there's so much breeding that needs to be done, to start being done. That's a very good thing that, that when, you know, people get into trouble, that you could use volunteers, because really, like, I'm literally wanting to pull those weeds, they're so ugly in there.
Go ahead.
I want to take it on, I already do the co-op, and I can't keep up with that, so that's my volunteer, but as a volunteer, I'm happy to do that, right? So I'm sure there are people out there who, to get them out, it's physical, it's.
It used to be a common practice of mine, like, I know a couple of prominent people in town that actually had to do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do my co-op meeting.
But it seems to have, I'm not sure why, I know in some cases why, but overall, I'm not sure why it was not being used as an opportunity to, for people to pay back.
Yeah, it's a, it's an easy thing to do.
And maybe something we could, can look at.
Yeah, the city can be prepared with stuff that, when, when you need volunteers, you can.
I'm not exactly volunteers, that's part of that.
They might need supervision, be conscripted.
Oh, no, yeah.
Training a deputy, they used to call it being voluntold.
And you have to teach them what's a weed.
But you can have, like, you know, maybe a senior person in the volunteer group that supervises.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something.
It's, it's like, wow, like, I just see all these things that, in the city, that people could use volunteers, you know?
And we ran into some of the places that were city, city agencies, there was issues around, you know, criminal record checks and.
Liability.
Checks and things like that, yeah, and if they're using equipment, obviously, you got to be careful what the.
And the collective agreements, another one, yeah.
But, but I think it's still worthwhile looking at getting some of that stuff there ahead of time and having some stand, almost like a standing offer kind of idea of jobs that could be done.
Even like the Nelson Cycling Club doing bike trails, because they have maintenance days and they'd be supervised on those. I know some kids have had to clean out the, the tracks for the tram.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's not a fun job, apparently. Through the parking lot, they have to clean it up to get the tram work.
Well, it's a lot of work, I see the elderly volunteers doing it, we're not walking really. They could use some young bodies.
Sure, sure. They're called organizations, they would all come up with ideas of that.
Sure they would.
Clean up goosebumps.
That too.
That's me.
All right.
Is that M?
Yeah, the conference, so I sent a notice out, and so the CAPG conference is going to take place the 28th to the 30th of September, and if we wanted to join in with the First Nations portion, which I would recommend at least as many of us get to attend, we, we register the whole board, including Chief and Shiloh, for the conference and pay the fees, and then they also record it, so in case you missed some session, then watch it later on. It's really good content, I've seen the content of the, you know, the program, and it's, it's quite excellent, lots of good speakers and so on. There'll be what they call breakout sessions, so you can ask questions, share some ideas, so I would, that we register for the conference, including the, I think, the First Nations portion.
Can we get registered individually or as a board?
No, as a board, and then we all get an individual Zoom invitation.
Code, yeah. You know, that's right in the middle of hunting season.
I thought that was the first of October.
No, September 10th.
Ah, okay.
Putting these conferences on and all of these webinars and anything, has anyone ever considered that people have full-time jobs that volunteer on boards? Like, there is not one of these.
That takes place.
That is in the middle of the week, in the middle of the workday.
Well, then, I was just thinking, okay, so if they record them, then I can actually look at them afterwards, but.
It's not pretty the same.
We miss out the discussion.
Totally. I don't know why, if they just don't think people work that are on boards.
I, I told the board, I said, "Do you understand 10 o'clock Eastern means seven in the morning here?" And they said, "Do you have a problem with that?"
I can listen from seven till eight, catch something.
So we have to remember that the times are all Eastern, so that's the only thing.
Yeah, well, thank you for registering, because I have nothing to report.
The other thing I could just add at this point is the BCA BB conference, with Nelson. So they want to have it in Nelson next May, in 2022, so I just thought that we as a board should, as a committee, should meet again and take, remember where we started and had all the ideas and wait.
It seems like such a long time ago, and I don't think we had.
And the world has totally shifted on its axis, so whatever theme we thought was good enough is probably not good enough.
Yeah, we have to have like a separate meeting just to talk a little bit on.
What I'd do, I'd ask Ashiloh to send us the notes of what we did.
To remind us, yeah.
And then that's, and then the resiliency theme that we had thought about, and then the board, the BCA BB board is asking our board to come up with a program with suit Nelson and, we want to be the showcase, and so we want to. So in anticipation of that, I already called Prestige and I booked 46 rooms for next year. So I talked to Shell, as I mentioned, manager there, and so that's done, so.
Great, good for you.
And the conference rooms as well? The conference rooms as well?
Yeah, 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 I talked to her and I said, "Look, we're going to have breakfast there and lunches there, but probably go out for dinner somewhere else for one dinner, like, you know, one of these themed dinners, like a Russian dinner somewhere or a."
Get the Italian club to do pasta for us.
Mary Hall was open, and they're having that, wouldn't that be wonderful if they were there?
That would be really nice, but I think it's, we probably missed that, the school's closed by then.
Is it? Yeah, because this is.
That's what we found out last year when we talked about it.
But you know, I started with the first of May, and they're booked, Prestige is booked all the way till the 27th of May, so I don't know, that's how busy they are.
So what, what dates are the conference again?
I think it's the 27th and 28th, I think.
Oh, so it'll be the end of May.
End of May, yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. September, I think the government has plans for another phase of COVID protection to be a little change or adjusted. That's the understanding I have of the committee, so we might want to hang on till, see what comes out of that.
Of course.
Imposed or lifted? Imposed or lifted?
Depending on how things are going.
What more is there?
The variants, like.
Of the Delta variant.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking that there, we're likely to have more restrictions again in the fall, so anyway.
I don't know, I booked a flight in September.
Ever optimistic.
Did you know, by the way, that the castles are going to change to one flight a day, none from Calgary?
Yeah.
It's just going to Vancouver.
And that, are they going to do more than three days a week?
They will, except one day there's no flights, no flights there, so just one flight a day.
That's crazy.
Well, there kind of has to be demand here, but it's still not high demand.
Well, but the thing is that because it's so inconvenient, people make other arrangements, so it's, it's not that the demand isn't here. As soon as people can go to Spokane, they're going to be flying out of there.
It's a lot to put, you know, to fly in the U.S.
Yeah. Okay, next is AA, and that's the correspondence, West Coast, the people for justice, racial justice, July 12th. Move receipt, discussion.
Justice, racial justice, July 12th. Move receipt, discussion.
I'll definitely move receipt.
I'll second. On favor. Thank you.
I'm not.
The gentleman. There was a number of items in, put it in that letter, I think, that we need to discuss in the teleconference meeting.
Sure.
And we can bring it to the open meeting if you wish. I was just going to say, the government has said, please make your submissions to the Police Act reform. And it's open to the public. So good for them to putting it out there.
I was really impressed with the fact that they were very specific, like quoting sections of a police act and then recommending changes. And they were reasonable, well-thought-out changes, I thought.
Oh, no, you're right. Okay. So we're moving into the teleconference for now. Bring it in the open. Need be after that. New business or late items? There are none. Motion to adjourn. The, the, you know, on favor.